Okay, at this time, we're gonna recess the board meeting and open a public hearing on the purchase of the property at 230 West Eighteenth Street. Like to review what's going on with that then?
State statute requires that before the purchase of any adjoining public property, adjoining property for school or other public purposes, that you have a public hearing which has been notified in the newspaper, published two times, first time fifteen days before the meeting, I believe it was, or something like that. The publication has met the standards of the statute. After the close of the public hearing, you'll be asked to adopt a resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase the property. There is an agreed price. After your resolution, the purchasing agent has to receive at least two appraisals, and the average of the appraisals has to be the value or more. You cannot pay more than the average of the two appraisals. Those two appraisals have been received, and they are both above the purchase price that's been agreed to. So if you approve the resolution, the purchase will be done hopefully by the end of the month. So we have not received title insurance commitment yet, so that'll take a little while. I don't know how ready the Realtor is with that, but the school will receive that. I'll, either I or Rachel will review that and get word back to go ahead and close if everything's ready to go. I expect it is, they've had the House on the market for a while. But everything's ready to go. It's now the opportunity to speak, to either influence you, yes, to purchase, or to reconsider, or not spend the money, or whatever their concerns are, and then you'll be, close that public hearing, and then you'll have the resolution later on in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you Ted. This time, we'll open it up to the public. Any comments or questions? Okay. If not, we'll close the hearing on the property and resume our regular board meeting. We'll start out with the minutes of October 24th, regular board meeting, and the minutes of the November 8th study session. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to approve?
I move to approve these minutes.
Okay. Motion by Steve.
I'll second.
Yeah, second by Lisa. Any other questions? All in favor? Right here. Okay, motion carried by zero. Financial report. Val?
So we've got claims 10,331 to 10,479 totaling $853,445.38 on the board docket of approval tonight. Senior payrolls are on here as well, enlisted for public view. When it comes to fund report, our general fund started at $201,339. We had $998,357.93 in receipts. Our expenses for the month were $725,342.26, leaving an ending balance of $465,334.67. Pretty much a normal month of payroll and benefit expenditures from there. We did move $275,503.55 in utilities that were paid out through two utilities over the course of the month. Were able to pay them out of CPF per state statute, and that was done in October. It was the biggest thing going on in general fund. Debt service started with $1,852,205.27. We had some property tax replacement credits in the amount of $8,663.45. No expenditures for the month, leaving an ending balance of $1,860,860.72 for October. And so going on to capital projects fund, we started with $968,595.57, excuse me, $4,210.98 in receipts. We had expenditures in the amount of $611,732.99, leaving an ending balance of $361,735.56. Again, capital projects fund is where we pay for technology salaries and benefits. And expenditures were higher in this area because that's where those general fund utilities were charged to CPF for the month of October. Transportation fund, we started with $966,502.70. Had receipts of $2,083.50 from, again, property tax replacement credits. Our expenses for the month were $55,233.89, leaving us at ending balance of $900,13,352.31. Again, salaries and benefits for our transportation, bus drivers, and for current Insta-buses were expenditures in this area. Last but not least is the bus replacement fund. We started with $348,081.68, I'm sorry, $348,44.97, my apologies. We had $536.71 in PTRC, again, that's the property tax replacement credit that we get. No expenses. I've confirmed with the store that the buses will be in in December, so that'll be on the December docket. They have one of them's arrived, and it's getting prepped and staged, ready for us to use it when we get it in December. The other one's shortly getting behind, so by the time they make it their way, it'll be December, and we'll pay it out before the year is up. So ending balance in bus replacement fund is $348,581.68. Any further?
No questions. Thanks Val. Well, we'll need a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Jenny.
I second that.
Yeah, second by Steve. Enter discussion. All in favor? Right here. Okay, motion carried by zero. Okay. To donations. We have the Optimus Club, life skills for pumpkin picking, $500. Optimus Club, the high school Spanish club trip for pumpkin picking, $175. Optimus Club for the key club, pumpkin picking. See that five times in a row? I think I'm gonna have to here. $35. Optimus Club Jag pumpkin picking, $120. Robotics team, Northern Indiana Community Foundation, $250. And Big R, RMS Life Skills Class for Christmas Store, two boxes of quart canning jars. Are there any others?
I always look to Candy. She's always on top of that for us, but I don't believe so. Just, again, generous donations throughout the community, and those service clubs that continue to support us. It's amazing. Every month, they show up on that list.
Really appreciate it.
We actually have two members here that remember the Optimus, so thank you.
Three.
And I can tell you, I can tell you the third because he came in smelling like pumpkins one day to one of our meetings.
So a personal hi-toe, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Dan especially keeps the schools' needs at the top of the list. Anytime we have a momentary break in what's going on, Dan says, "I know of a need at the school." As a matter of fact, this morning, they approved another one that you'll see next month.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, motion to approve the donations.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Brad.
I'll second.
Yeah, second by Lisa. Enter discussion. All in favor? Okay, motion carried by zero. Thanks again to everybody for the donations.
The Optimus Club likes to give donations to the youth groups, but the, all of those people came and worked really hard, and it makes it much more rewarding for us to give to groups that come and work that hard, because that is a big job there, and they all pitched in a great deal for us.
That's a good experience for them, too.
They're my favorite kind of fundraisers.
Okay. It's good. We have overnight field trip.
Adam, are you prepared to speak in regards to National Honor Society and the Leadership Camp to Kings Island?
Sure. This is a new opportunity for the National Honor Society. We have new advisors this year. It's trying to kind of bulk up what the organization does in the school and in the communities. So they found this leadership thing that they thought could teach a kid a lot of important skills, and also be fun for those students that are here.
Is this Lori Williams?
Correct.
We, she actually helped when I was the principal at the middle school. We actually did a very similar Candy's nodding her head, because that was the first time we did that, a trip very similar to Kings Island, to embrace those leadership skills and the conferences they have to offer, as well as the, enjoying the park as well. It's a good, it's a good trip for the kids, and it was, she did a nice job, and we did it before. At the middle school level, this would be at the high school.
So there are events at Kings Island, or, and plus the park?
There are conference breakout leadership. It's, it's just like a seminar, and then they also have time within the park as well.
Any other questions about the field trip?
Do we know how they're going to fund the trip?
I've thought that too, but it's at the bottom right below the source of funds.
That they'll be responsible for raising the money?
They'll presenting to local organizations or groups to ask for financial contributions, and they'll do fundraising for the students to earn money for the event.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, wasn't to talk to any, I had the same question, because I, that's a lot of money to people, and I wanted to make sure they don't waste it or not, so.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if I, thanks. I'm really appreciative of the sponsors for giving this ample time, too, because this is, this trip is in May. That's why I looked, I'm like, surely, this isn't like in December. Cold, they have the whole place to themselves.
Okay. There aren't any more questions on the motion to approve the field trip?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Brad. Enter discussion. All in favor? Okay, motion carried by zero. Oh, next, we have some policy readings. Jenny, did you want to go over any of those?
Sure. They're listed first, second, and third, so we can do it in that order. For the first reading, we just have two. That's what I'm showing. These were discussed at our November study session. We have policy 8390, which is animals on school property. And then we also have policy 9700.01, is in regards to advertising. And so this is our first reading for those policies. There'll be two more later before those are approved. The second reading is a group of policies we discussed at our October Sunday study session, and then brought for first reading last month. It is 2410, 2430, 3120.08, 6320.
And those have all been up on the web, the second and third reading policies have been up on our website for any public thought or communication. Once we have that first reading this evening, we'll be sure and post those yet this week, so that we're prepared for next month's as well.
Perfect.
But they've been up on the website.
So that leaves us with the third reading, so I will present these, and then we would want to ask to approve these tonight. Those are policies 0130, that's in our bylaws, there's some correct, just some wording changes. 1130, conflict of interest. 1214, 3113, 3214, those all are conflict of interest policies. 3410, that's a deletion. 4113, 4140, termination and resignation. 4214, this is gifts. 5610, suspension and expulsion of students. 5610.02, in-school discipline. And 8500, which is food services. So those, as Mrs. Vance said, have all been up on the website, and that is now our third reading of those.
Ted, can we vote on those as a whole?
Just for clarification, I don't have the first readings up yet. I was waiting for that after tonight. So the first readings of policy 9700.01 and 8390 have not been posted yet. I was waiting for any communication tonight, and then we'll post those yet this week. But all of those under second and third readings have been up on the website for probably two weeks now, two and a half weeks, almost three weeks.
Policies on second reading, you need unanimous consent to move them to third reading tonight, and then you can adopt all the policies on third reading by the numbers.
Okay, so first, we'll need the motion to approve the readings of the first, second, third. Have a motion?
I don't think we approve.
Most approved the reading, then motion on third to approve the policy, isn't it?
Well, the, yeah, first reading occurs by presentation, doesn't need a, doesn't need a motion.
Okay. Well, we just had on here, motion to approve the readings.
So I make a motion that we take these second readings to a third reading if it's unanimous, and then we can move it from there.
Right. Okay.
I'm just waiting.
I second that.
Okay, I'll make the motion, we take the second readings and move them to the third readings upon unanimous approval to be then forward passed.
And motion by Brad, and second by Steve. Enter discussion. All in favor? Okay, most carried by zero.
So those have been up on the website. I have not received any additional feedback, so if there's no additional feedback, then yeah, so we can go ahead and approve them.
Okay. So at this time, we'll need a motion to approve policies listed on the second, which was moved to third, and all the third policies read.
I move that we approve all of the policies that have been moved to the third reading, and those original third reading policies.
Motion by Lisa.
I second that.
Second by Steve. Enter discussion. All in favor? Okay, motion carried by zero. Thank you. Thanks Jenny. Surplus items.
We had an online auction for several items in the tech department, as well as a piano that was over at Riddle. We did sell some of those items, but there are, there is a handful, and you have that copy, which we did not get any bids on. And at this time, we could most certainly use the storage and need to, need to move on, and in fact, we'll probably be bringing more items to you in regards to auction as we continue the technology process, those things. So at this point, we need permission to go ahead and dispose of, or donate those as appropriate, and move forward to clean out. I do know that there may be some interest. We haven't made specific phone calls if we can donate some of those items, especially like the piano. I know that at times, I don't know if Scott gets this as well, but we get emails where people will come up and pick up laptops, those devices, and will then ship them overseas to third world countries, those types of things, who may be able to benefit. So we need the approval to either donate or destroy those items, so that we have that area for storage. But we have sold everything that there was an interest, and it wasn't a lot.
But we tried.
So you have made the attempt to sell it?
We have.
So it's the needs. What kind of projectors are these?
I think they should have been overhead projectors, the, you put the plastic on them.
And nobody wanted those.
Nobody really did.
The piano's the big thing, which we could donate. I hate to see something like that.
We'll most certainly make that attempt.
So we'll need a motion to properly dispose of the surplus items?
I move that we properly dispose of the surplus items that were not bid upon during the auction at Jana's discretion.
And I'll be more than willing, if we find people who are willing to take, we'll make sure that we report out those donations and what's happened to those items, so that there's a record, and you know that.
I second Lisa's motion.
Okay. Motion by Lisa and second by Brad. Enter discussion. All in favor? Do we have a question out there first?
Jana, where would you, if anybody's watching this on RTV, RTC TV, where would they call?
Central office at 223-2159. We'll be more than willing to help work with that.
We did put the list up on the board, so hopefully it could be seen.
It was up there.
We can try to get that on our website as well, and post that for donation.
Okay. Let's go to the vote again. Okay, most carried by zero. Okay, thank you.
Typically, I have the radio show tomorrow morning as well. They call in, so we'll make sure that we assure that as well at that point in time, so that the community has the opportunity.
Tom wants anything on treaty.
There you go. There you go. That's how that works.
Okay, we're moving on to the personnel report. For hiring, Patty Barker, middle school special education instructor assistant for eighth grade student. Shannon Belcher, high school intense needs instructional assistant in life skills room. Stacia Conrad, Columbia instructional assistant in charge of temporary classroom safety. Courtney Redden, Columbia one-to-one special needs instructional assistant. Brenda Cloud, Riddle special needs instructional assistant. We have resignation of Annette Sass, high school intense needs instructional assistant. Barb Garringer, middle school sixth grade girls basketball coach. Elizabeth Davison, Riddle instructional assistant. We have family medical leave, Skeeter Doherty, SRO, December 12th, 2016 through January 31st, 2017. Jamie Bach, high school ECA treasurer, December 29th, 2016 through January 15th, 2017. We have a club sponsor, Kim Beal, Columbia, continue to direct Zebra Zone program. Sports, Laura, Lauren Atkinson, middle school sixth grade girls basketball coach. And we have the hiring of Brad Carter, Director of Facilities. Have any questions? If not, we'll need a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Jenny.
I second that.
And second by Steve. All in favor? Okay, most carried. Four abstain or disapproved?
I'll abstain.
Okay. So we got four, four and one abstain. Motion carried. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Brad Carter.
I would, I would like to begin by thanking Jim Swank, and Adam Strasser, and Terry Thornsbury served on that first round of interviews in regards to Brad, and Jim did a phenomenal job of helping guide that conversation and direct that conversation, and there's gonna be a transition period here, and, and I think that those two gentlemen are gonna work well together. I know Brad is eager to learn from Jim, and, and so I am so appreciative of you gentlemen for being here. And then I had a second round interview with Brad, where I got an opportunity to meet directly with him, and have further conversations, and drive that a little bit deeper, and just make sure his desires fit our mission statement and our goals, and I fully believe that. And Brad, if you'd like to take a few minutes and introduce yourself, and give us just a little bit of your background, I know we'd be honored to hear that. Jim's laughing because you've been put on the spot this time instead.
My name's Brad Carter. I'm the, was the facilities director at August Navy School, did there nineteen years. I have a background of very strong HVAC electrical background. Obviously, being at August for nineteen years, I have a lot of skills there. Prior to that, I worked for Culver Military Academy, where I ran the refrigeration department there for two years. Prior to that, I worked for United Airlines, and I'm ex-military, ten years Air Force, working on fighter jets. So I have a mechanical background, I have the electrical and HVAC, I have the school maintenance, and I'm looking at bringing it all together here at Rochester, and I'm just looking forward to the opportunity, and I'd like to thank everyone for that.
Welcome.
And again, just to kind of recap, we wanted to make sure that we had somebody in place to learn that HVAC system from the ground up. We have millions of dollars going into these systems, and we want to make sure that we have somebody long-term, and there is, again, no push for Jim, and he has an area of expertise, and we want to make sure that we tap into that, and so we're hoping that that provides for a smooth transition for the district.
Come on, Jim, that means you don't want to work forever.
True. Can we make a motion in a second to no push for Jim?
At least until he's sixty-five.
So thank you, Brad.
Thanks Brad.
Now he can, well, hopefully he'll help take care of that new property once we get to that point.
Well, speaking of new property, this time, we'll adopt a resolution to purchase the property at 230 West Eighteenth Street. And I don't know if you want me to read the whole.
That's not necessary.
Okay. Thank you. It's posted. Basically, purchase price, $68,500. So any questions about the purchase of the property, or discussion? If not, we'll need a motion to adopt the resolution for the purchase of said property.
I move that we adopt the resolution for purchase of 230 West Eighteenth Street for the amount we just discussed. I can't remember the, 68?
Yeah. 68.5. Okay. Motion by Brad.
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Enter discussion. All in favor? Okay, motion carries by zero. Okay, Superintendent Business.
Just a couple of things that I would like to share. Last week, I had the opportunity to sit down with Mayor Ditten, Sheriff Chris Sailors. Skeeter was there to help on behalf of Rochester Schools, and some of the calls that he has had to field. Tom Butler was there from the fire department, Andy Schontz is chief of police, Brian Lewis, Andy Perkins, Rick Randstad, I think that was everybody there. We just shared concerns about the leaf burning that's been going on. There have been times when we've actually had to switch classrooms, or move classes off of tennis courts because of that burning that's going on, and it just becomes very problematic when you have students that are, may have health concerns, when it just doesn't provide for good air quality, and it becomes a distraction. I know that Ivy Tech has postponed classes, canceled classes due to that, and so at the same respect, we understand where the rights are, as far as the county being right here behind us. So that meeting went very, very well, and I know that the mayor is very interested in supporting us, and taking that through the steps that he needs to do in regards to creating new policies, and help me out with the proper road, word codes to, to help support us in that, in a no burn zone area. So he and the highway department, everybody is working together to help support Rochester Schools and Ivy Tech, while at the same time, going to be able to provide for those out in the county, some type of leaf pickup and service, and those types of things. So I just want to acknowledge that, that still has steps that they need to go through on the county department, and with the mayor and his department, but they, they were very supportive of Rochester Schools, and I believe that moving forward into next summer, we're gonna have some clean air here, so, yes?
I think last Tuesday was the finest draw. Gloria called.
Gloria called the fire department on the people right behind there. They were not only burning, they were not burning leaves, they were pulling piles of clothes out of trash bags and putting them on fire. They said they even had mattresses, burning mattresses on them. They've been burning everything.
Yeah, he, they shared that at the meeting and I think that we're going to have the support we need moving in. I know that things take time and that you have to go through the processes and red tape, but the meeting was, I felt very productive and I think that steps were going to be taken. Is that what you gathered from that, Skeeter?
You're on the way.
So, I just want to thank everybody for sitting down at a common table.
Is Park Road the city limit or?
Yes, this side.
This side is?
Then right across the street is county, yeah, we, so they were looking at, and I don't want to step on their toes, but what we talked about was the thirty-one bypass, trying to be that marker to help us distinguish those calls and that support system to be put into place. So, again, I just want to thank them and hopefully they'll be able to carry through on their end with the processes and everything, but did want to thank them for sitting down at a common table and listening to the concerns. Also, tomorrow at ten-thirty, and I know it was short notice, Val was able to get Jim Strater and Kurt Pletcher, and I know Jenny intends to be there just to drive down a little bit further the numbers around solar power and whether or not that may be something that we can embrace at Riddle Schools and what that might look like for us. So, we are not yet ready to make any recommendations, but do want to drive down a little bit further on those numbers and what that might look like. So, those discussions are still happening and we'll tackle that more tomorrow. And then finally, just wanted to share that December, I would propose that we have our next study session on December eighth. I have Z-Space, which is a new technology group that Scott Kissler is probably tired of hearing me talk about, I'm so excited about it. But I want to bring that in for our teachers and I've talked to administrators about being able to free up some teachers that day. Gloria Carvey from IB Tech has made a commitment to be there to see that as well because there may be opportunities for us to, to link those modules and that curriculum together with IB Tech and what we're trying to do to grow with them moving forward. Also, Terry Lee will be here with Project Lead the Way and the biomed part of it and their support that we've had through the community foundation and Fedco in regards to that. So, I apologize for the switch of dates, we're trying to bring a lot of entities in together at one time and Z-Space is very new and very limited on their time and taking those modules around. So, I would propose that we have it here December eighth, beginning at nine o'clock like we normally do and then Z-Space will be here from ten to eleven o'clock. So we'll have that opportunity to, to, to talk a little bit about study session items, but then have a demonstration which will include teachers, IB Tech, administrators, the tech committee, those, those people to see that as well while we have them here.
Did you, so nine o'clock instead of an eight-thirty or something like that?
Would start at nine and they should be here. And we'll, we'll do the best we can to make sure what's on the agenda. I mean, that'll kind of drive that starting time as well.
I just knew that several of us couldn't come in the afternoon, I wanted to make sure you have it.
Right, now it'll be morning and that start time will be driven by how much is on that agenda, but we'll try to shoot for a nine to eleven time.
Yeah, if you haven't been building.
No, we'll be here because of, in this room, I've worked with Barb, bless her heart, she gets those phone calls all the time from me, but we're going to try to have it here where more people can see that and they'll be able to bring in the modules and set those up to demonstrate. So, allow more room and freedom to move about.
I'll bring you breakfast, Barb. I'll bring you breakfast.
That's on record, too.
It's on the camera. You can't go in and...
And I believe, other than everybody having a great holiday and time off and deserving that, I believe that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? From the public? No, motion adjourned?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All right, second?
Second.
Second by Brad, all in favor? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Run all energy to a few people.
Now, what do you want for breakfast? More continental or?
Save some money, I can edit that out.
Barb's worth it, she's worth more than a breakfast, I can tell you that. You want a continental breakfast or a real one?